Oh.
Sorry Jed.
Yep, the uh down in the applicant, I think probably a fair amount of support for you doing what you wanted. But I also understand that it is and so gonna take a little one. I know we we got to where we are tonight. It's might not have been as happy as we could have been. We didn't round to do it. And so for yeah, we're on a bit of a clock. We what against this thing, we don't we'll we'll get there out. I think we can. Um. But it's not gonna be relax with Ryan. There are a few. Did you get the comments made that he had on your? Okay, so our our fair number of comments help some of them are pretty easy to fix. All of them. Thank you so much. Why don't you tell us what you're asking?
Well, but basically what I'm looking to do is
it's not slow. I guess we're getting trying to make the guys a point where they can hear me.
Basically, we look to have events at the farm, comedy shows. Uh, I saw you say concerts, you think of big, you know, penetration, but it's, you know, small bands. Um. You know, uh, carry out key nights, bring some entertainment into the farm and hopefully eventually make some money. Um, you know, the last, you know, we did run a last year because I didn't know that there would be more deals, uh, permits and stuff. And basically I lost money on every single one. But I think it was still good for the community. I think I everyone that came down was very impressed with the layout of the um farm and 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 some people don't even know the farm's there. Um, who come in like, how do you know this from down here? And I've done a lot of work to the farm since I've purchased it and, you know, as we all know, less and less people buy Christmas trees. There's a cost of the Christmas tree um have gone up, so. So I need to offset that to hopefully be able to keep um, you know, the properties and the businesses private. So again, you know, I've been looking also, I've been, I've always tried since I owned it to try to get the farmer's market here. Because I thought the venue that they had, that was, you know, would have been better served, uh, a bigger property. So that was something I jumped in and tried to jump into this year. It didn't pan out, uh, because I think I started a little late to get enough vendors to buy in. But hopefully I'm not, I'm not giving up on that. Hopefully that's something we can do in the future. Um, I think and over is a farming town. It would be nice to have a farmer's market in it. Um, but again, you know, a lot of this stuff, it takes, it takes a lot of work. As you know, John's helping me out, you, Wayne's helping me out. Um, with the with the procedures, just I'm not used to, you know, procedures, permits, you know, I, you know, even when I bought the farm, you know, Bob gave you some instructions and and it was basically Bob did whatever he wanted. And so someone told Bob not to do it. Um, you know, and I didn't know that permits would be uh or needed for something on the farm that was, you know, pretty off the road and interfering with uh limited uh people. I I've always reached out to the neighbors um and asked if there were some concerns or anything like that. So basically, we're just trying to bring some, you know, feasible entertainment to the to the farm. Um, you know, as future goes, I'd love to possibly have weddings there. Um, you know, stuff like, stuff like that, just making it more of a uh venue. But yes, I'm not. You know, when you asked me to write the these regulations, I was dumbfounded. I was like, that's not my forte.
I got you. It's basically it's not mine either. Then why, you know, I did write it in the summer. But it it is hard. I understand that. Certainly, what what the towns got posted up there, you know, we talked about agricultural accessory uses and that's to pick your own events, if you add strawberries, I guess, I don't know what the you have cut your own trees. So that's probably, you know, what what you got there. The non-agriculture accessory uses are probably where we get the, you know, the questions coming up. We'll we'll get to that. There's a couple of little new site plan review and special permit, you know, a little bit interchange, being a few different things. Got to get that straightened out. Got a couple of subsections in in that general, you know, down there, John scrolls down a little bit. Um. And right there where it says subsections twenty eight three and twenty eight four of this section. Now, I don't think we have any twenty eight three and twenty eight four, so I don't know what what those are.
Yeah, it was my understanding when when I was putting these together that uh there would be back and forth. So I didn't want to go full bore um into it because I wanted to have more give and take. Um, for instance, I didn't want to say shut off at nine thirty or shut off at night. That would be something that we would want to uh more have more of a discussion on and um. Again, me not fully writing this myself, kind of having intel from you guys as well.
And my comment, I I think it's important to point out that these regulations don't just apply to you in your corporation. They would apply townwide. Uh, for instance, um, if a restaurant in town wanted to have outdoor entertainment, I believe these regulations would apply.
I'm not sure because this is specifically listed as agro tourism or agro business.
It does talk about
the industrial business. Yep, the the uh the question I had and uh now, I know we're gonna focus very heavily on on where you want to go, Ryan, because that's the way it is. But if First Farm wanted to to do something, this would be the regulation that they would have to follow. One of the questions that Wayne and I had talked about a little bit is you're an industrial zone. First Farm's in a residential zone. Um. Do we want this to apply to a residential zone? Or is this limited to an industrial zone? And I think it needs to be residential zone too. That's where most of the farms are. So we're looking at something that would be applicable to anybody who's out there doing the farm business. Um. We can get there, but that'll that'll work. The uh I guess at this point, do any commission members have any specific questions of Ryan before we go to get some input from the public on what they think about this?
I I think it's a great idea. It's farmers market at all, it's profitable. Over time has him, you know, um, I think we got a lot of crattage and cobbentry. Good awful, some of those folks there, um, some of the
Make sure you're trying to talk up in for him. We got after you.
With the microphone.
Can y'all hear me online?
Are you okay?
Yeah, and and you know weddings too. I mean, you're trying to keep the business alive, keep it going, right? I mean, we has a right to do so and and better creative. So I think weddings are are great globally, especially folks that want to stay in the town. When little concerts, live concerts are always great, you know. Um, so I think it's gonna be good for the town as far as world buyers and
So one of one of the things that that I don't have an answer to, don't know if it even is applicable to us in the planning and zoning is at some point, a tag sale is no longer a tag sale. It's a store. When we have these little events, at some point, they're no longer little events. It's a business, you know, a wedding is a business. I don't know how to capture that transition. Maybe it's not even important. Maybe that's somebody else will come get the taxes from you that you're breaking in on all these events. I don't know, but but at some point, we're not into the little tag sale kind of things. It's bigger than that, and it's got to have a bigger expectation with the facilities and all that. So that's one of the things that I was thinking about as we go through this.
Well, can can I ask a question? What do you want to do? What do you see see this?
What I see, I see it just basically the farmers market, basically what I laid out, farmers markets, the, you know, I do, I like to have events. Again, I can't do it every weekend. Every, I do like to do it twice a month.
Do you want this to be a business that grows to something that's gonna get taxed or is it something?
Oh, yeah, well, I get taxed anyways because I I own businesses. All my businesses, you know, I have three businesses. So they're all gonna get taxed um on the income that I bring in.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, you know, that's the the end goal would be to make some money. But again, as most of my people know, the most things I do, I break even on or lose. Um, but it's it's about, you know, for this, it's about providing something. I I think it's it's a great venue to just to have people come together. There's not many things that can lie in this town. All of them good. Uh, in this town, it'd be nice, nice thing to have, and I have a nice venue for it, you know what I mean?
Any other questions or comments, Andrea?
Yeah, I'm just trying to tie the uh tie it together, Jed, as as to what your concerns are and what he wants to do.
Well, that's good.
I think that answered it.
Other mission members have questions without
John, John, could you uh put up um something that Ryan had written up that the events that he was gonna have? Is that possible?
Uh, I don't know if I have that.
It's on the town's website.
Oh, okay, hang on. Uh, yeah, give me a moment. You're looking for his essentially his narrative?
Mm hmm, yeah.
On the website. Page. Everywhere.
Locations.
Just look for that. Any any other question of the questions?
You think I I feel the same way you do Jed about this whole thing, that the farming are easy. It's the non-farming uses.
Is it the, sorry, is it the the event schedule that you're talking?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, hang on.
Yeah, somebody comment to make well, we'll give everybody a chance. If I forget, just let me know. Put that little flag up again.
Who's saying is uh uh most of this is non-farm related? So that's that's why this is gonna, it's gonna take more time going over those uses. But hey, I like I like what was written, what John wrote or and uh did Brants go over that, Jed?
Jed, I'm sorry, I muted you guys on the on the town side. So someone's gonna have to hit unmute on the on the laptop. All right. Yeah, we can hear you now.
Mark France has not looked through the list of events. He has seen a copy of the proposed regulations. He is providing some comments on that. Um. But in it's too early really. Yeah, it's uh kind of on the preliminary side. The uh but if yet there's any questions here?
Question saying, I think it's a good idea. I know my high school reunion was at the Salem Herb Farm. The herb farm down there in Salem, they made it into a place for venues, mostly outside, but it had a roof over one side of the part of it. It was really neat then, and that's the kind of thing I could see being done here.
Okay. Got you. Yep. Um, I'm gonna go Kevin. Anderson, any uh anything with you before we move on here?
No, I think I have a pretty clear understanding uh of what they're looking to do. Um. I definitely support the ideas, but like you said, and like Scott said, we just have to be careful with how we approach it. Um, I also understand certain things where in the farm, you know, everyone's trying to make it. And in the farming world, it can be a bit tough right now. Uh, so I understand looking for other avenues as well.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Anne Marie, anything?
Everybody read the the regulation, Jed?
Say again, Scott?
Did everybody read the regulation? I went over it. I found some spelling things and some things that needed to be changed in there.
Yeah, and Wayne, but he can go over with that with Brian later on. We'll we'll take care of that. I just give what I really want to get tonight is a sense of, you know, we got a lot of feedback from the public here. I want to get the the chance to hear what they got to say and uh and then we'll start ordering on it with with their input. Stay in mind.
Uh Jed, I put my comment in the chat. I don't know if you saw it. Um, but like wineries and some breweries are considered agrotourism and they have um music and vendor fairs, things like that all the time. So I don't know how this would compare.
So if I'm Jed, can I provide a little clarification?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
So, yeah, so uh for the record, John Guskowski, uh consulting town planner. I did, I, you know, I'd I'd helped um Ryan a little bit with the initial language and and yeah, so some of these, some of the references to, you know, section twenty eight three or whatever would have to be adjusted to fit this in the right place in the regulations. But broadly speaking, this is intended to do sort of to the two separate things that you described, Jed. Um, it it intended to, because the town did not have any kind of regulation really at all for events or activities that took place on a farm that involved some public interface. And so the idea was to not only define that, but regulate it and it's sort of a two-tier system. The the lowest tier being things that are clearly agriculturally related, like obviously pick your own operations. Um, you know, that's which is, you know, the Christmas tree farm and things like that. Um, which is, you know, different from the actual cultivation of whatever is being cultivated on the farm. Um, and then the other tier um would be those events that were just being described that are that are not really agriculturally related, but use the atmosphere and the and the setting of the of the farm um as a lovely event space. So, you know, weddings uh that that, you know, reunions, events, things like that are not strictly agriculturally related, but obviously um promote public activity and tourism and gathering and things like that. And obviously, because that has the the whole point of this regulatory process is to identify and mitigate um, you know, potential conflicts or potential concerns. And those are standard things, traffic, noise, um odor, you know, neighbor impacts, um and and those sorts of things. And so because the the non-strict farming activities do have the highest potential for some, you know, negative externalities as far as neighbors are concerned, that would be a special permit. And so, you know, what's Ryan is sort of doing is uh submitting not only a text amendment that would be applicable to any agricultural property in town, but also proposing his personal slate of activities um for the Fitch family farms. And and so it's, there's, there's really two issues going on here. One is the regulation and one is Ryan's slate of activities and and the commission should do what they can to keep those things separate.
Okay, yeah, thank you, John.
John, can I can I ask a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Who's that? Who was asking?
Wayne.
Oh, hey, yeah, sure.
Um, on agri agri-related events, um you said, uh, you spoke about uh pick your own, like pick your own Christmas trees, pick your own strawberries. Are are we really interested in relating in regulating that activity? Or something along the lines of um having Santa Claus visit the farm while trees are being picked? And uh, you know, driving people around on a sleigh or something like that, horse drawn.
Well, I think, yeah, the answer is, the answer is we want to deal with both, but but the question is at what level of review? Because again, you know, agriculture, growing trees is, I think, is really what all all the town talks about in terms of agriculture. Growing trees, you know, chopping hay, growing corn, that sort of thing. That that is in essentially an activity that does not engage with the public. When you're inviting the public, that's what that's what land use regulations is about, is to determine the the level of um you know, a-activity and potential for, you know, public health, safety and welfare concerns. And so when you're bringing the public, even if they're just, you know, cutting down their own Christmas tree, not seeing Santa Claus or taking a sleigh ride or something like that, there's still traffic generated and potential for noise. But that's that's a fairly low standard. And so what's being proposed in this regulation is those strictly agricultural activities, like a pick your own tree or, you know, pick your own strawberries or whatever, is just a straight permit from from you as zoning officer that you can just sign off because that's that's allowed. But, you know, as you ramp up and and, you know, there's gonna be some of these things that are grayer and you probably put your finger on one of them that, you know, it's a pick your own, but there's this enhanced feature. You can talk to Santa, or you can go on a sleigh ride or something like that. Um, that I think, you know, the the question that the commission needs to ask itself when setting up these rules is at what level does the 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 amount of public interface and inter-public activity on the site constitute something that the commission would want to look at with a little bit more scrutiny? So I I think it all needs to be regulated at some level, but it's just a question of, yeah, go ahead. We'll sign off. You can do this as a right versus, no, we really need to come, you have you bring you in and have the neighbors comment because there is opportunity for, you know, significant disruption. So it it, you know, the example you cite is probably a little bit of a gray area, but I do think it we need to clarify what the town's position is. And, you know, when you say, are we asking for this, you know, it's it's not up to me. It's up to the commission.
Exactly. Okay. And I think we can come through that uh fairly easily. I think it's gonna be in the higher end of the uh non-agricultural uses that we struggle a little bit. Um, but that's all we'll say about that at this point. I am going to go um through the guest attendees we have uh online first before we go around the room here. And the first up on my list is Aaron Hittberg. Uh, you got any comments?
Uh, yes, I do. So I'm gonna try to keep this very brief and quick. Um, when I saw this online, I I actually called the number for Fitch Farm, and I think I spoke to Ryan, who said he'd only done one or two events, um, which coincides with the weekends that I've spent on Bear Swamp on my back porch, trying to enjoy the solace of the seven acres and and thinking there was a band playing right on my back porch. Um, and it takes me about twenty-five minutes to walk down to where the bridge is being rebuilt or the the old sand pits um through the woods. I can't imagine that sound traveling that far if it was not cranked up. Um, I don't begrudge anybody um any type of anything for the community. I I I applaud Ryan. I I hope this works out for him. Um, but from what was explained to me was that he only did one or two events to try this out. And basically, the town told him, this is the verbatim, the conversation we had on the phone, um, that what he was doing, this, this is the permit that he's applying for, that he he needs to do what he's doing now or what he tried to do with a few events. Um, that being said, my question is, does this open up the door to um, you know, five hundred people at a concert that goes on till nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night? It doesn't, does it regulate the days of the week? Um, uh, or is the town just gonna, you know, is it gonna be, are you guys able to write in specific clauses specific to his permit and other people's permits? Or is it just a blanket where the sound says, well, it's approved, there's nothing we can do? And we're stuck for five or six days a week listening to, you know, somebody that sounds like they're right on our back porch. In other words, um how how can I, how can I wear this? Did I lose you?
I got I got the gist.
I see what's there. Uh, I'm I'm a novice, so you guys kind of got to break this down to me. I understand there's a lot of stuff written and a lot of stuff has been explained, but I don't really understand all of the verbiage and all of the, um, I guess, basically, I don't want to see this. Um, he's applying for what he's saying is just, well, that's not gonna happen. I can promise you that. Is it gonna be in writing is my question. So um, other than that, I wish him all the success in the world. Um, it's and again, like the one thing I would disagree with is that he said he reached out to neighbors. I don't know if he reached out to people directly next to him, but as far as everybody up and down Bear Swamp who has heard this on their back porches or in their backyards, um, nobody reached out to them.
Yeah, again, I want to talk here tonight. Let me address a couple of the specifics there. In in the does have hours that are allowed. Those are both I, you know, Ryan, uh, I don't know that that's, you know, what will be agreed to or whatever. That's a commission decision that we're not gonna get into tonight, but it is specified in there. Um, there's, there's a couple of things that are written in there that I'm not sure, um that the sta- the the standard is is pretty severe in what we got drafted here. In in the general requirements, such uses or events shall not create a nuisance by noise, vent frequency, odors, trash traffic, and are contained in parcels. That's a pretty high standard to meet. I don't know that anybody can beat that one, but you know, obviously, uh, you might think that there's a nuisance there.
Okay, no, no, sorry. So again, this is the first time I'm seeing a lot of this, and maybe I just didn't do my research. So this gives me some comfort. So sorry, go ahead.
And I will um point out here is that uh I can't find it, so I'll just
What are you looking for, Jed?
Under standards, it's a subparagraph C. And it says, uh, mission satisfaction that sound can be attenuated to a level not higher than background noise in the property boundary. I I don't know what that means to you, Ryan. Uh, I know what it means to me. And uh they're they're your words. You presented the permission. How how do you uh how do you deal with something like that?
Well, I thought there was a decimal um reading that I think we, I thought that we mentioned prior to, um, you're talking on the boundary line?
I, yes, yeah, boundary line with your neighbors.
Oh. Background noise, I mean, that's kind of big. What's what's background noise?
Kind of big and kind of low.
Because, you know, if you're on Route Six, that noise is higher, pretty loud, louder than my music probably.
So anyhow, that's it. I said, just pointing out that, um and so again, for here's benefit, the benefit of anybody else that might be here. What we do is we draft the regulation that has a lot of requirements for different things in it. And then the case of any of these events that we're talking about of a non-agricultural nature, any applicant, Ryan, First Farm, whatever, would have to come back to us with a special permit that we would go through to look at the exact specifics with his site. What he's gonna do to attenuate the sound at the boundaries could be landscaping. There could be all kinds of different things. But how are we gonna make these regulations work to protect his neighbors? So, but and that would be, that's, you know, right now, we're looking at starting that process next month. So you can be interested in that, but that's that's where we're headed, that to go. And then that would, in addition to this being approved by the commission, that special permit to do any of those other things would be approved by the those would be the specifics that we would uh enforce on the on the Fitch family farm. I'm gonna move down to Jennifer Depp.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Great.
Hi, um, I live on one five four Bear Swamp Road, which is not not directly across from the farm. Um, just a little bit down the street. Um, and I I love the concept of the agriculture events, of course. I think that's fabulous for our town. And I do agree that we need to be very, very careful when we are putting things into our plan, whether it's agriculture or the non-agricultural, because we'll start setting precedence even when we approve permits. And also, as a family who has a business in town in a in a business zone, um, I realize also this could apply to to my family's business and I, when I look over what was put up briefly, it does not state an acreage requirement for business. I believe it's business and industrial zones. It just said sufficient space. So technically, you're you're, you are, we are opening things up. We're opening things up to a little bit more from what I read. That literally means, hey, you could have a concert at indoor landscaping. You know, you could have a massive concert there as long as there's enough. You know, you could have a massive concert there as long as there's enough people to park, or it's a potential, you know, for the permit. And there are are other farms in town in other areas. Um, that, of course, that would open it up for too, you know, there's some large properties around us. And I I do support Aaron in the fact that, um, some of the, although I'm a huge music and concert lover myself. Some of the, the events that have already gone on have been significantly loud. And though I don't think anyone cares if it's occasional or random. I am very, very concerned that potentially, just potentially, it has to be written in well, that we start giving permits. Um, for the non-agricultural and suddenly. All of us on Bear Swamp Road on, you know, on the bunker hill side of the street in our backyards are having concerts until nine P M. On the weekend, weekdays. And what was it, I believe, twelve, uh, I forgot the time on the the weeknights, maybe it was ten. Um. And that's, that would be my only concern would be the special events. And and as a horse owner, I'm concerned about fireworks in my backyard also. And I'm not sure how fireworks would work into the special permits, so if they would start having massive firework shows or otherwise. Um, just a, just a, just a thought about that, I think, I think a few people have mentioned that already, speaking that. We definitely need to be very careful regarding setting a precedent for the special permits and and they're kind of vague. The requirements to receive the special permit are a little bit vague, so maybe they could just be finessed and worked on a little bit, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Uh. Phone over there, yeah, I think the phone number's leading in, so I think that's everybody online. Uh, obviously, we got a lot of people here tonight. Um, I would like to keep the comments as brief as we can. We'll start right down with you, if you can state your name.
Hi Jed, it's Elaine Bookard, I'm online.
Welcome to you there.
Hi, um, yeah, I just, I I just wanted to pipe in, I mean, as chairman of the Economic Development Commission, we're we're all for Ryan succeeding. And, you know, we we would love to see something like this working out. For, you know, I don't see every other night, every night concert, maybe the the occasional concerts, weekend concerts, something like that, certainly the farmer's market. Um, he's had, you know, like the funky monkey, the vendors and all that kind of stuff are great, those are great things to have. And we certainly want to encourage that to happen, so we wouldn't want to, you know, squash it. I mean, I do understand the noise and it's kind of interesting, I don't think anybody really realized how close Bear Swamp was. To Ryan's property and that they were listening to the bands, it was like, wow, we just looked at a map and that was like, oh, that's interesting, you know? But we're just trying to now put a lot of thought into it so that, and it will be rules that everyone has to follow. Um, in town, so that's why we're trying to get something boilerplate. But certainly whenever you do a permit process, there's going to be some customization based on what's being requested. Um, but we're definitely all for it and and certainly, you know, hope this comes to be, thanks.
Thanks Elaine, thank you, now we start the course.
Can I interject a ten second thought? I know I already had a chance to talk, but can I give you ten seconds of your time?
Uh, no, incidentally, if everybody hasn't gone home because we're into tomorrow. Got to get to the people who are here now.
Got, thank you, thank you.
I'm trying to get to the guy in the corner.
Yeah, I'm I'm his neighbor, uh, probably have more land area bordering bordering him than anywhere else. But, uh. Music. I can hear it, I have woods between me. I suggested to him today, if anyone complains, just put a barrier behind where they're playing the music and on the side of the playing the music. And it'll block a lot of it up. I I I've never been before ten o'clock. I really have to listen to hear the music coming through my windows. If air conditioning in the summer, I'm not really worried about what's going on down there, I really am not at all. Um.
Name an address for the record.
The address is four oh five Room Six, I'm right behind behind their yellow house. And, uh, I get twenty-some acres there.
What's your name?
And I'm very happy with it.
What's your name, sorry, I don't know yet, we need your name, so we can put you in the record.
Sure, Edward, I'll bet.
Okay, thank you, Edward. Next, um, I'll speak on behalf of myself, my wife and I both own over and over, uh, so we have business in town, we do also, we're four one five Room Six. Uh, my personal feeling is, um, the noise that is coming from Ryan's farm is something that we enjoy, we can go down and enjoy it. Uh, I think the selection of music he has picked typically has been, um, pretty mellow, pretty chill. I'm one of the musicians that performed at his place, so I I know that the the noise has always been a concern. And the other thing I would recommend is knowing the number of venues that are like-minded like this to give Brian an opportunity to make make an investment. He's already made an investment in a small stage area and for him to make additional investments in like sound barriers and such like that. Um, you can certainly look at places like the farm on Carterville and Marlboro, they've got a full music venue, they do vent, uh. They have a farm, they do weddings, so there's lots of people who are doing this and capitalizing on a way to make a property more. You know, attractive to come and visit as well as generate revenue from town, so I think it'd be a fantastic condition to our town.
Okay, thank you, Wendy, you're all done, is that good?
Yeah, that's really quick, so, um, yeah, Wendy Cup, and we go over and over, and we've been doing a artisan fair for a couple. Years now and it's growing and it's been amazing and a really great contribution, I believe, to the community. And Ryan and his entire family have been great collaborators, they're partners, they're friends of ours. We have just had a really amazing go of like this relationship and even on the other side of it. I've been to his shows, I've been to the comedians, this is, it brings people together and they're they're having an amazing time. And it's just chilling, a wonderful use of space, and I really hope that this does come to fruition.
Okay, thank you, Bob. If you don't like, I'm going to stand up for this so everybody can hear me. I'm Bob Hamburger, one-on-one shotting Mill Road. Um, a couple of the different things I want to say about this, first, um, we look at. The distinction has been made between agricultural and non-agricultural activities. The agricultural activities, because it's a farm, we call this something as a right or by right. Because it's a farm, you can do agricultural things. And that's one side of it, and I think that's the easy side of it. The other side of it, the non-agricultural things, if you look at his schedule of activities. For this year, for example, there are nine things, there's live music, there's karaoke, and there's comedians. And these all fall under one umbrella, which is entertainment. And I would hope that if we go ahead and pass these requirements, that when he goes to the to you guys to get a special permit. Then it can be one special permit for all nine events under that umbrella of entertainment on the property. So that's just, that's one suggestion. Um, as far as what the purpose is of these rules, for those of you who don't know, I once was on this commission. In fact, I chaired the the Planning and Zoning Commission before Jed. Um, my vision of how this commission should work is that we should be facilitators. We should be coming up with the rules and regulations that help people do the things that they want to do. Some people speak from a different perspective, which is that they're looking at ways of avoiding problems, of avoiding liabilities. And this is all important stuff, but I think as volunteers that serve the town, we should be looking to try to enhance what the town does, not to be obstacles to it. So that's kind of my philosophy and how I approach all this, and I hope you guys will get it that the same way. To echo what Wendy has said. These events, I went to some of them last year, they bring people together, they really are a wonderful thing that this town hasn't had in the past. And, you know, people talk about worrying about the size, frankly, I've been to Fourth of July parties that have been bigger than his events. In fact, I've been to Fourth of July parties at your house that have been bigger. Um, people talk about, what if five hundred people show up? We can't get five hundred people to vote on the budget in this town, okay? You know, if we, if he gets fifty or seventy people to show up, that's a big turnout. And, um, and quite frankly, if he wasn't charging, you know, to try to pay back the bands, I don't think we would be discussing this because it wouldn't be a commercial endeavor. So I'm all for it, um, I I I'd like to find solutions rather than find impediments and, um. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Next.
Hi, my name is Tara Fitch, I live in ninety-eight Shottanville Road. Yes, my name is Tara Fitch, ninety-eight Shottanville Road in Andover. Anyway, I'm in support of it, I mean, obviously, Ryan's my husband, but, um, we live in town, we have kids who went to this school system. We have friends of the events and honestly, they're pretty low-key. But it's nice, families are there, couples in town are there, they mingle, they meet people in town, they make connections professionally, socially, however it is. And it's just a nice environment, it would benefit the farm itself, I think it benefits the community in a lot of ways. We do recognize, you know, that some of the close proximity neighbors, you know, noise, planes and things like that. But, um, one time Ryan had the decimal thing to make sure that it didn't go above a certain number. Otherwise, he would have addressed it, so I think that a lot of the problems can be mitigated, and I think that's one thing I'm in support of.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to say, but I'm in support of it. I'm also in support of it.
Yeah. Who's first? The realer probably doesn't have anything to give, but I broke, did he comment?
I can speak for, I can. Okay.
Um, hi, I live in Sula from one seventy-seven Shottanville Road. I just want to say from like a public health perspective, one of the like the main things that people need to. Live a happy life, this community, and that's what's Ryan, that's what Ryan's bringing. And people come together at these events, we all do, and they're really good, I mean, most of them, we could, we went to every single one pretty much. And they were like wrapped up by ten, pretty much, the noise was not bad. And my dad's a business owner and he's constantly trying to expand on what he has. So I only, I hope the best for you.
Next, you have anything to add?
Yeah, um, I'm Logan Canitis, one seventy-seven Shottanville Road, and, uh, I brought all my friends with me because we all go to Fitch's concerts and. They're always so fun, you know, we bring some food down there and hang out and, um, see some live music or some comedy. It's always a great time to like see everybody from high school and, uh, everyone in town and just like make good friends as well.
Okay.
Sixteen Wilker. And, you know, I've attended a couple, uh, of the events there and like everybody has been saying here, they are low-key. And really, it's not disruptive, I think it's a kind of a big thing for, I mean, we should foster it, so.
There's Heather Gaius, one seventy-seven from Shottanville Road, I'm, uh, Logan's father. Um, I brought Logan today, he actually wanted to come, and it was a good way to kind of show the public that this is a family-oriented thing. And we, as a family, have gone to a lot of these things and we're able to bond together and meet other people from town. And it's a, it's a good way for everybody to come together and meet new people and meet the people from town and enjoy some live mu- acoustic music. That's not very loud at all, um, and i- it's just fantastic and I'm all for it, so that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Scott Warren, Bunker Hill Road, I'll speak to one, um, I also have a farm. And, uh, it can be a pathetic life where you don't make any money. It's not funny. And you need to do what you can legally to make some money off your land that you own. Well, most time the bank owns it. Maybe when you get old enough, you can own. Now, on the positive side, what he's doing there is great. It reminds me of some things that used to happen in this town that don't really happen anymore. And he's never going to make much money doing it, he's not, he is doing it for some money, but it's more like, oh, maybe I made fifty dollars tonight. And it was a great time, it's a great time for everyone, I bring my son there. Last year, he was eight months. And, you know, there's teenagers, young adults, old people, you know, it's great. And they also understand that, yes, there are, there's always going to be negative and maybe it's a little loud sometimes, and they can probably work on that. But you're also, one thing's guaranteed in life, you're never going to please everybody. There's always going to be somebody that has a has a problem, so just take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you, next.
We're at Biola, Route Six, uh, four twenty-five Route Six. Um, Ryan's right behind me, um. We had a discussion before, um. I called a few times about the noise thing too loud. And, and, um. I'm a nice guy about it, but, um, it's definitely a different experience. If you're going to a concert versus. You want peace of life. So I'm coming from that perspective of. Why would you keep him quiet, I, you know, I hope the very best for Ryan that I. We we talked about agricultural things like the farmer's market and I'm, you know, I think that's exciting, but. You know, three hours of music, you know, when it's loud, it can be pretty intense for me. Trying to look for peace, again, if you're going to a concert, you want to have a good time, you want to loosen up, yeah, it's a totally different spirit, so. I think you have to consider that side of it as well. Um, if there was a way maybe to use that, I don't know, a big building, maybe you could have, you know, because I'm picturing parties. Well, are we talking about parties, do we want music outside, do we want, you know, do we want to have big, you know, big speakers and stuff outside? Maybe you could move in a building, you know, the building you have, that that might. You know, that might go a long way as far as moving down, thank you, uh, because my only complaint is the noise, real. So.
Okay, thank you. Erin, now you can have your ten seconds back.
Uh, uh, thank you so much, uh, sorry about interrupting earlier, I just, I didn't know how many people were in the room. So I'm wondering, again, because I'm not opposed to this, um, and I think when people say, it might be thirty seconds, give me a second. When people say, uh, I like the music selection, or I live right behind him and I enjoy it, it's all subjective. Again, this gentleman that just spoke kind of reiterated that. Is there a way to grant his permit and let's give it a trial run for a year? Give him the the blanket, um, permit for one year, and if it doesn't work out or one event's a nightmare, we have to deal with nine more? But then you do it event by event the following year, is there a way for him to start generating money now and we can give this a a trial run? He has expressed to me over the phone that if it's an issue, call me directly, man, and we'll we'll crank it down. So I'm not opposed to, I want this man to succeed, I'm just concerned, like I said, the way it's written it, we don't end up with, there's no restriction on it. And we don't end up with five nights a week, you know, blaring music. So that that's my my two cents, so is there anything the town can do for him, is the flip side to. Kick it off, like get it, get it going and and let's give it a trial run, thank you.
Well, actually, uh, you know, the town is giving it a trial run. If if we weren't in favor of what he was wanting to do, he wouldn't be doing it right now because it's not regular. So.
Got, okay.
And I hope to work with, keep it that way while we go wrestle with. There's probably a couple of sticky points in here that we've got to get through, um, but yes. I think everybody on the commission wants to see Ryan succeed, we just need to. Uh, acknowledge the concerns of a couple of the neighbors. And I think there are ways to deal with those. They can have that win-win answer out there that everybody's always looking for, so I'm confident that we can do that. But we can, uh, put the, uh, um. We we can make the regulation on a trial basis. Um.
Nice, okay.
People are, and we haven't been very good at following it, but every home occupation is is by. Regulation, subject to a ninety-day review. We haven't done many of those, but, uh, we could, and and I do think that we would end up putting. A similar kind of, uh, stipulation in whatever we do here, whether it's in a special permit when he gets that or in the regulation. But it's clear that there's a lot of people like what we're trying to do. Um. And I thank everybody from the public for for coming out tonight. The, uh. everybody from the public for, for coming help tonight. The uh,
Chad, this is Catherine Hutchinson. You didn't fall on me when you were asking for input from those people who were online, so I would like a chance to speak when appropriate.
We're here for other reasons. But go ahead, Catherine.
No, I just wanted to express my concern over the noise level. It is a problem. I, I live on Bunker Hill Road, for those of you who don't know me, and it is a, it's loud and um, I just joined in the sentiment to the people who live on Bear Swamp Road about the noise. And hopefully the commissioner is seeking to approve uh, any part of this, that that noise, the decibel level be addressed with all seriousness. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Catherine, I apologize for skipping over you when I was, yeah, on the list there.
That's fine.
So, I think we're, we're getting to the, the people. Enjure the public hearing. Until the next meeting, till we get a set of revised regulations and then John get together to go with and, and do some of these things. Uh, we heard about noise. And I haven't seen the regulation and I've got it out, is playing. And if we're getting, heads after dark. We have some pretty, uh, requirement, lighting. And uh, I think, lighting is something that needs.
Lights, we have lights to park along.
Yes, I, I got you. I called you. Yeah, one of the things that you know, and this probably, no, this, alright. You don't, it's there to a, pretty into it. Somebody making the events, at the ballpark, we do, the farming.
Can you hear? Breaking up again?
No, Chad, Chad, yeah, your last, your last minute or so of dialogue was a little.
Look, guys. Um, do you know when the concert ends? Farming Carter, yeah. Yeah, oh yeah, eight o'clock. It's looking at that. Yeah, you just guess it, yeah. So, you know, and, and you know, uh, is through the permitting process out there, noise was a concern in that, you know, that farm is, is bigger than the example farm. The uh, the one that was in the newspaper just last summer, where they had a big beautiful barn that they hope, but, yeah. I, I would also point out that on Bunker Hill Farm, you know, they got one concert listed now. The uh, place that was, you know, written up in the paper, they had one concert listed. How much of an inconvenience do you, Ryan, would it be to end your events by nine? That lets us, then, waits the lighting issue, waits, I think it provides some the people, while we're working on it, it's connected to what, I was just being pressed.
I have to think about that. I mean, most people get out of work at six, whether you're coming, I mean, Saturday, well, it's actually Saturday. Yeah, so.
I, I'm gonna ask you to consider that.
I have, um, with Amber, we talked about, you know, maybe nine thirty. Uh, because I think that's, you know, maybe more realistic.
I always didn't put the, I didn't put the time in, like I told Wayne today, uh,
uh, I wanna discuss that, but I won't be restrained, hey, we have to be done, uh, whatever.
It would be nice, the better of faith, put it together.
Yep.
And it puts the wrap up at about nine o'clock, I think that's a better answer. Personally, you know, we're not, we're not deliberating the, the, the application, we don't, but I, I personally, nine o'clock is a better number.
But the, the. The nice thing about the farm, I'm just, I think is, when it gets dark, of course, all the lights, the solar lights that we have, the lights around the stage.
Yeah.
And during the summer, it's not dark at nine o'clock. I mean, that's part of the little atmosphere that we have. I do have lighting. The, the big commercial building that we have has pretty, pretty bright lights.
Well, what did that, that's one of the things that, that it's shiny, it's shiny, and the people walking around.
Again, we're trying to have a event, and we got most events on line at nine o'clock. In real world.
No, they end at eight o'clock. So.
Who?
The Farming Carter Hill. They're, they're selling alcohol and making money. Well, I don't worry, oh, no, I, I'm just.
I'm, I'm like your lights, but. Yeah, yeah, it might be, might have to be.
We're good.
Chad, one.
One more thing on the subject of sound. Uh, I'm an electrical engineer, I have some experience with acoustic design. In fact, I've had a lot of conversations about the acoustic panels that are in here now, and there over the last couple of years. Um, I would be happy to throw my hat in the ring, go around town during one of these events with a sound pressure level meter. Sit on your porch or in your living room, um, and just to try to get some, some grounding on some real numbers on all of this. And I, I need to point out that there is an enormous difference between what is detectable, what we notice, and what is offensive. Okay, people talk about sixty dB, seventy dB, you know, eighty dB is the sound of an electric drill and a hundred dB is a jackhammer. Um, if you go out, when it's warm, the sound of the crickets and the tree frogs is about seventy-five dB. It's actually an elevated sound pressure level. And I would be willing to bet that that background sound is louder and on a measurement instrument than his music hits of the.
I actually, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I just, I'm talking about it.
I actually did not oxygen.
I'm just throwing out this point here, you know.
Yes, okay. Yeah, I got the, I got the sound pressure level meter on iPhone.
Okay.
And so, uh, you know, I, I know how to go out and get that data, yeah, I will. But um, the, the way the instruction is written is to a very good standard, is we won't be a nuisance to the neighbors. We had a couple of people that shared some thoughts that, that had wondered on that and, and I'm looking for the win-win on how to make a win. The suggestion is you might try ending the concerts at nine o'clock and seeing if you get the support of your neighbors that way. That's the, and that, and that's all I'm gonna say about that, that might be more deliberation than I'm supposed to be doing here than I, but uh, at this point, unless the commission members have an objection, I will continue the public hearing to our next meeting. It's ended at seven o'clock, updated, but restrictions, regulations to go for. Leanne, did you wanna say something? Was there somebody there that, that I missed, uh?
Hello?
Yes, it was Leanne.
We hear you, Leanne.
Leanne.
Well, now you did.
Good.
Okay, oh, she's not the bottom, yeah. Leanne, I showed you muted, I don't see your phone number listed up there anymore. Um.
I, yeah, this is John, I, I merged her, I merged her phone number with her video feed, just so it was just one listing.
Okay, well, at this point, uh, um, sorry, but we can't get the, can't get Leanne's comment, uh, we can make it at some other point. But that, that concludes the public hearing portion of the meeting for tonight. Thank you for attending, thank you guys for being involved in the community. And uh, and those folks who joined us for that online, well, thank you for joining. Hey, you're good, and I see you taking something, is it outside? I appreciate it, if you, if you wanna get done tonight, thank you for coming.
Oh, thanks, thanks.
You can get done before my rest or something. Yes. Okay, um. So at, uh, in time eight zero eight, I will call the regular meeting of the Planning Zoning Commission of Warner. Uh, first up is full column seating of alternates. Uh, I see uh, Anne, Patrick, Scott, Leanne, and myself, all the regulars are here. In addition to uh, the alternates, uh, uh, all three alternates are with us tonight, so uh, thank you all for attending. Um, next up is addition or changes to the agenda and uh, I'd like to add an item seven C, which is uh, the discussion of the letter that, the town attorney Dennis O'Brien has asked our zoning enforcement officer to sign about the, uh, lot line adjustment between uh, the King family and uh, and the town of Andover. So I made the motion to, any other changes to the agenda. Okay, I make a motion to uh, approve the change, one change to the agenda that item seven C, the letter about lot line adjustment. Looking for a second.
A second.
Okay, thank you Anne. Uh, any discussion? No? Call for vote, Anne. Patrick, aye. Scott?
Aye.
Leanne?
Chad, this Catherine Hutchinson, Leanne just sent me a text saying that she can't unmute herself.
I just showed that she succeeded.
Oh, she just did, okay.
I just a second got in.
Alright, thank you.
I, I don't know what happened, I couldn't even, you know, use the mute button.
The motion passes.
What is the motion on the floor?
Okay, next up is public speak. Yes, Leanne.
Um, wh- what is the motion on the floor?
The motion on the floor was to uh, add the one item to the agenda. Uh, the letter on the lot line.
The what?
The lot line adjustment between the King family and the town of Andover that we voted on last year at the town. Uh, Dennis O'Brien, well, I don't wanna get into it now because, okay, in the second, in there, we're just gonna add that thing to the, that's the and it passed by zero zero.
Okay, and what happened was the, was the, what happened to the Fitch item?
We vote, we, we adjourned the public hearing, we'll continue it at the next meeting.
Okay, good, that's what I was gonna suggest, thank you.
Okay. So, next up is uh, we've got a free application con. Dean Dodson is coming to discuss his plan. And uh, I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, sir, and that you, uh, you referred to the danger of the meeting, so I will. That's to that, um, so we, I believe the commission has copies of my draft application. As Wayne pointed out uh, over email, it's not complete and I'm aware of that. Uh, the reason I'm here tonight is because I wanted to vet whether I should go through the process, looking at the application, as you probably know, going through that is at least hundreds of dollars if not, or I, I have a brother, he property, he had to do it, twenty thousand dollars on. Uh, so basically I'm here to say, um, identify a property, Shottanville Road, about twenty-four point eight acres. I mean, it's known residential at this time, would like to put an energy independent AI data center in this property. Now, let me just talk for a second about energy independent, uh, you think. So, all are probably read, boys, I'm reading about, AI's taken over the world, analysts are saying we're gonna run out of capacity. Capacity mean, so, we, I did, the other thing people are saying is, there's gonna be shortage of power, so for example, on of course, we're not be able to provide us all the power we need. So what I wanted to do is put, um, natural gas substation, a couple of solar panel farms on the property next to the, then, wide lines, uh, point, maybe we're gonna make some line, but not any kind of, you know, that there are a lot more certification, it's for you're serving some sort of, or your what have you. Uh, I'd do that now. The main issue is so, number one, the data center, two stories, um, two hundred by two hundred, relatively large, but it's gonna be offset off the ground, but I was out at the property I'm walking the, around the other day and I, I did also wanna mention, that's that I sent you in the application, actually, A, discovered when I walked the ground, Connecticut own property, so everything's gonna have to be moved up the road possible. And frankly, I love pulling into the, and that's, so that's unfortunate, but um, so the, the issues that I need to deal with, of course, number one, natural gas, although it's less polluting than some of the other energy sources out there, still need to control any kind of pollutants coming out of that and there are ways to do that, so. And now, all of that, I realize I need to have certified, uh, through various Connecticut agent. Uh, I am tracking those, I didn't make, or the Wayne. Um, I looked at it and I, and I realized, okay, I have to do something pretty similar to this application to Andover just for the, the water. Plus, I can't just guess what the flooding characteristics are. I was in contact, or I attempted to contact a previous owner, Roger Bell, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that. He will, he did not respond to either an email or a call. Wondering whether he did any testing, but I walked the property and it did occur to me that maybe we just bought it because we wanted to hunt deer off, I don't know. Um, but in any event, it's an unimproved property, so um, we would need to put, that big systems on there, we'd need to put in a well, build a building, need to build a substation, uh, we need to put up those solar panel farms, and then also have a parking lot and a data center. Uh, and I am also aware that the certification required me to get approval of the fire department and make sure they have water available if there's a fire. All those things I, I've looked at, but really coming up with a solid plan is gonna cost a fair sum. And I wanted to make sure of hearing from you folks, if there's no chance that we're gonna be able to put a, a data center on the property, then I, I don't wanna try to do it. And now, the, the, why, why would Andover want this? Well, I would say, um, and I haven't gone out to any of your local businesses to see if you guys need AI resources. Right now, I would say for most people, AI is a toy. May be insulting, but most people are just playing games with it. But there is tremendous potential if you're smart. Much more efficient. Um, so I'm seeing companies like Cigna, like, I don't know what you. Know is I'm going to see SNOW. Health providers. I'm a veteran. I've been trying to. Get into help the VA. Trying to deploy a new electronic health record system. Presumably, there would be some there also for data centers. So I believe it would be enhanced the tax base. I don't think we're going to be hiring hundreds of people. In fact, in my draft application, it's a. Drive. A lot of people will chill off, but I hope. That it would be interesting over Anne. Businesses that might be using AI resources that don't have their own in-house resources. But they, of course, would be welcome to. Customers of our. Services when that, as I said, open. Cigna and. Hartford Health. Elevated health. Ever Source. They're also going to be trusted. So again, so the main, the main, my main objective in coming here tonight is this. Thing is little as possible, but to hear from you whether. There's any chances residential property could do what I'm asking. Wayne also mentioned, hey, you know, we got. Route six, there's lots of commercial zoning. Why don't you look at that? Well. You know, I've been looking at Connecticut because I grew up here. This is the property that. You know, kind of rose to the top. So if there's property out there that I'm not aware of. I know the Bolton Ice. Ice rink looked above as I drove by, looked about the largest built. So that's close to what I was looking to do. So open to options, but. Again, the main objective here is, you know, should I continue my my? Real estate agent is here. Should we continue to? Consider buying the property or? Is that not a good idea just because there's no way? And I did. Of course, I have the opportunity to. Listen to the discussion about the farm. The concerns about all that. And that does mean plus in environmental factors that. Are with one or try to be independent.
So. Back. Probably. Twelve or so years ago. The last big thing that tried to come into Andover was a. Night, a natural gas infusion plant. It was going to be at the Christmas tree farm. Right out here. And. They got blown out of the water, never even made it as far as you just did tonight. So congratulations. But that, you know, I think the concern was all these thinkers with natural gas were going to come on the heavily traffic. Property and. And, yeah.
Well, if I might make a quick comment on that, I'm not looking to. Generate enough that of energy to supply all of Connecticut or even Andover. So focused on the AI data center, just so. I don't have AI. I don't have ever source saying, sorry, we haven't got power for you tomorrow. You know, we have to shut down. I just.
Though that was just an example of, but the last thing, we did get a little feedback from the town at that point. The just. So in your, in your write-up. You talk about the size of this building.
Right.
And it's. And I want to make sure it's not a typo.
It's large.
So you're saying two-story twenty five thousand square meter. That's not feet, that's meters. Okay, yep, that that is huge.
Well, and in fact, one of, one of the partners that I listed here came back to me and said. Sorry, our approach is we do wooden frames. We. We can't do a building that size. So I actually. Have made an adjustment to my plan. Seven summons construction on Hartford, I think is probably a better choice for that, but. I have not gone through all the details again because. We can't build it. You know, spending money or ask the people that I feel guilty inviting Ron to be here today.
So so. Just that, you know, to take him out a little bit. So the location of that property on Skinner Hill. You know, in if you, if you were to look in our. Land conservation development, the the business industrial pretty much. Along Route six at this point. If the property were up for Route six, that would certainly be easier. You.
Right.
We. So. That would be a huge industrial thing. In a completely. Residential area way, way off the the beach path. And. And so you said, is there? Any chance? Yeah, there's a chance. I. I think that's. That's kind of a stretch from my thought is is going out there. The. I would love to have the AI data center in town. I think building that huge would be. You know, we're, we just got done talking about, you know, we're going through the planet conservation development. The businesses are three percent of our grand list. You know, everybody else is residential. I think you'd be able to help us there. The piece of property that I do have in mind that I think. Could work well for you is called Lindholm Corners. And it's right down at the corner. Of Route eighty seven. And Route six. And it's a little bit fast there, but. But we have had conversations with that guy. That owns it. And it's not for sale now, but I don't know why it's not for sale. I think it's just because he hasn't got around to. The listener is my phone.
You know how big the property is.
It's I'm going to say if if.
Fifty six acres.
How many, Scott?
Fifty six, but he has parcels off of Route six that are like four and six. Directly adjacent. To Route six or on the turnaround up there.
So. It's bigger, a little bigger than what you're looking at, but I think the cost of the property.
More than twice.
Yeah, I don't know if that's good or bad, but if. You know, that would be someplace where I think we could. Entertain. But right now, that that piece of property is a little bit longer up six. It's business. And then the rest. Was intended to be residential.
I put the map on the screen, Jed.
Okay, yep, and. So, yeah.
Thank you for that.
There's been talk of a vineyard down there, right?
Yeah, there, we have talked about putting a vineyard wine. Thing out there.
That is part of what I.
And and so. I think that would be a much better fit. And work well for the town. It's a. Only is the guy's name.
So I won't harass him, but I just, it's good to know.
So we have, we have the chair of the Andover Economic Development Commission on this call. And. My suggestions are.
Hi. Yep.
Economic Development. So. My suggestion is, is that you. You guys get together and discuss this. As we discussed on this property on Skinner Hill. The first hurdle is the zone change. And that's a significant hurdle. You've been up there. You told me you wrote this. So you know that.
I also read through requirements. They're not true. I got.
There's a huge amount of wetlands on that property. There's, there's a, there's a pond. It's. You know, bisected by a pond. There's a pond on it. There's a lot of wetlands. There's an intermittent stream that goes right through the middle of it.
Right. And you're talking about putting a six acre building on a. What was it? Twenty four acre lot?
Well. So when I saw your proposal, I said, I like the proposal. I just don't. I'm not fond of the piece of property you're going to put there. And I know why you picked that one. That's one that's for sale. You want. Through the listings that popped up. And so. My, my hope tonight would be don't rule out Andover, being a bunch of folks that don't want to work with you. Good. And I think. Well, I would just ask you to. I think. Better fit to go to.
Better parcel.
If I may, our economic development commission meetings tomorrow. We get out of the agenda. Elaine, what do you think?
Or, yeah, it's actually on our agenda to discuss this because it was, it's an exciting proposal. I'm like, oh, we want those businesses, but. It's got to be on Route six. You know, it can't be off in a residential area. And it's not just Lindholm Corners. We have that whole. Parcel there. And over auto parts. That whole parcel. Is, and they are trying to sell that.
That's close. Oh.
Yeah, and then, and then also. I know there's some property. I think it's thirty two acres. The Jab. Property next to Network. That one, they're, they're in tax trouble and they haven't been able to try to get a hold of the owner at all. So that might potentially go up for tax sale in December.
Wow, okay.
So those three. Are all come to mind as like that. That's where this would fit.
Doesn't that property being split by the Hop River be problematic?
Well, the Hop River is always there. But you could find some acreage. To handle it, you know, because it's a large, it's our large parcels. You know what I mean? The, the grapes vines could be over near the Hop River. You know what I mean? It's like the agricultural part of this. Could be there. But yeah, the Hop River is always an issue when you're trying to develop along Route six.
And I thought the Andover Auto Parts with the gravel bit next to it might be too small for you, but you know.
How big is that property? Does anyone know how big that one is? Because you've been discussing it.
Six acres or so.
Oh, that's only six acres? Never mind.
That would be just enough for the building.
Yeah, exactly. Never mind. I thought that was a bigger acre.
And and there is not enough room on that other property. That flat area on there is not six acres. I know that land very well.
Which one? The, the network, the one, the Jab?
The one that he's trying to buy, the twenty four acre piece.
Oh, yeah.
There, there might be six acres up on the top of that. Hill there, the flat area. But.
And and you've got state property. You've got Nathan Hill Farm.
State property. You have, you have wetlands.
Farmers Market right next door.
Elaine, Chad, we've, we're gonna, we've got a depending problem here. The laptop we're using is on a battery. The battery's running down. We don't have a charging cord.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, yes. No, you, you are welcome to come to our seven o'clock meeting. Otherwise, you know, we'll have another one, you know, next, next month. Every month we meet. So we can let you know when that is.
Yeah.
Elaine. Yeah. Elaine, I'll send you an email tomorrow morning early to let you know whether I can make it to the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks.
I was excited to hear this, you know, I, I said. Well, the last. Good news to keep down was the Dollar General. You know, that was a little business coming. And folks were mixed on that, but you know, I think. What you're talking about would be good for Andover if we could do it right. It's. Just got to find you the right spot.
So much for your time and. And I must admit, I was a little worried that I was going to get shut down. Your, your language is pretty direct and. And Wayne was quick to tell me, hey, your, your application's incomplete and your, your language does say you have a risk of being rejected outright for any. But I think I did a good job of saying, listen, I need to assess whether to make the investment. It's just. Like to present to you whether it makes sense. And certainly. You know, I grew up in Weatherfield, so I didn't grow up here, but you've got a beautiful. Wouldn't want to do anything undermine. The, the environment. Who else? But. Well, right now it looks, you know, like AI is created blind side a lot of economics that they have created when you were able to be a little bit ahead of it.
It would be great. I had to hear this.
Yeah. Yeah. So if I, Jed, if I might, Pete, I'm John Gaskowski. I'm the town planner. I would be really happy to meet with you and sort of talk through logistics of. The whole process. In, in Andover.
Great, okay. Thank you. And I do know I'm reading and I've been reading your stuff, but. A lot of it. So God bless you. And thank you for having me. And thank you, Ron, for coming here. Oh. You know, at least one other item on the agenda. Thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you, John. You have a way of knowing how much battery you've got left.
We can see it's halfway.
Okay, oh, we got that. Okay, so.
Yeah, well, how long past the will that?
Yeah, well. But it will start flashing at us when we have to.
Yeah, it'll do something bad.
With. What I'd like to do in the interest of battery light. Is go down and. Have Wayne talk for two minutes about this letter that he's been asked to. To sign. That's item seven C. We're not, we're not going to have. But. Well. Just quickly. I got, I, I met with Dennis O'Brien, the Andover Town Council. And apparently. Something is unclear to me exactly what it is. One on. Where. Attorney for. Willie King. So roller grim in the, that whole land, the whole boundary line agreement with the town. Where they, they were asking for. Something that basically said that this boundary line agreement. Doesn't violate any zoning rule, any zoning regulations. Or. Creates any zoning problems. Attorney O'Brien. Doesn't believe it does. I don't believe it does. It's.
I don't believe it does. And I know Eric doesn't believe it does. They. It's clearly a lot. Created something that was going to be a nobody.
Clearly a lot night adjustment that in fact solves. A. A. Bounding issue. So. Attorney O'Brien drafted this letter. He asked. You know, can it be presented to the board, that the board bless or the board, the board basically. Give me permission to sign off on it and send it off. I don't see any problem with it. Okay, so. At this point. I will make a motion to approve the letter that. Zoning agent drafted to send out on our behalf. Thank you, Anne. Any, any discussion on the letter? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, Dan. Patrick, aye. Scott. Again, Scott.
Can you hear me? Yeah, I can hear you.
Those, aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Leanne.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So the motion passes five zero zero. Next, next quick thing I want to get done before we use up to the major battery with John is the approval of the minutes from last meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes. The planning zoning commission on Tuesday, May twentieth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Leanne. Any discussion on those meetings? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. Anne. Patrick, aye, Scott.
Aye.
Leanne.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The minutes are approved five zero zero. Now we're getting back to John at P O C D.
Okay, well, noting it's a relatively. Empty room and we're almost dealing exclusively with the commission. I will. Not do a extended presentation. I wanted to note, hopefully everyone got a chance to review. We sent out a revised copy of the economic development chapter from the P O C D. Incorporating comments that were stated. At last meeting as well as the markup. And comments that Jed, you had gone through. The, the major changes were, you know, a couple of, a couple of typos and references. And then. We had sort of downplayed the existing. Voting zone stuff, the mixed use, the mixed use zone opportunity. And so we, we changed most of those references instead of establishing that, that sort of mixed use regulation to. Promoting and enhancing to make them a little bit more attractive and a little bit more. Promoting and, and enhancing to make them a little bit more attractive and a little bit more, um, user friendly for the market, so. Uh, there weren't that many substantive changes, I think just a change in focus. Um, and hopefully, um, if anyone does have notes on that, based on the second, um, draft. Which is referred to as, uh, draft revised June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Um, would be happy to receive additional comments on that. Um, and then in an effort to keep on track, um, we drafted the housing chapter. Um, that I'd be happy to share. Um, again, I'm not going to go through this in great depth. Um, this evening, oh, sorry.
My one comment, uh, the economic development thing.
Oh, okay, yep.
And so, uh. I know it's probably intentional, but we don't have, you know, who's responsible for the action items yet. And then, the paragraph right above that, you know, I thought was the, they would, would maybe be a key to the whole thing. Unless we begin AI data center. Smaller, more dense housing options in strategic locations could be an economic boom to the town. Then correctly, this can add valuable real estate to the grand list without substantial service needs. And so, I thought that was probably the place where we could get the biggest bang for the buck on our effort is. Any more housing, you know, that's the need, and I would put that. Number two, on the action item list of priorities, because it's, it's. Setting as it is to consolidate the town garage and transportation and move it someplace else could be very hard. But I think we need to and must do something with housing and that's how we're gonna, you know, keep the budget under control. And the number one action item that I would put on the list is the one you tacked on to the end. Which is incorporate economic development tasks into the scope of work for the town planning consultant. Now, I know you probably won't like to have that hidden in at the end, John, but dang it. Then, you know, if we're gonna make some, some progress here, we're. The EDC and the planning and zoning need a little help. I need to make sure that we have the resources and, and I was very disappointed. In the discussion that I heard on the budget this year, they were cutting the town budget, you know. We need more help over here to be average. You know, we, we need help, so I would put that right up there at the top, and that was my only comments on that, but I think. You would agree with those, Elaine.
I agree with you too, Jed.
Yep, no, totally, totally agree, Jed, to make that one of the priorities.
Okay, now, Jed, onto the house.
Okay, can I, can I just one more thing on the EDC? Because I know I had, I had mentioned it last time, um, it's just kind of a little sniggly thing. Um, that you still, when it comes to coming up with events and things like that. You still have in there talking about the rock, paper, scissors and the rosh and boh. And I basically think if nobody has any clue what you're talking about. That that was just a little too specific, but you know, just kind of developing some kind of tournaments or festivals. Is good enough as opposed to rock, paper, scissors, because I, I still don't even know what that is.
Oh, somebody's adept at humor.
Yeah, I know.
Well, that's, that's fine. I, I mean, this was, this was a suggestion from, from EDC specifically, and I mean, because.
Yeah, from Beata, I know, it was Beata.
So, I, yeah, I mean, we could, I, I don't know, I, what are you suggesting, Elaine, to, to? Or to get rid of it?
Develop tournaments and festivals surrounding the history of the town.
Okay.
The town history. Because once again, I mean, when people read through this stuff, they'll all of a sudden say, what the hell is that? Yeah.
It's a, it's a teaching opportunity.
Yeah. Okay, batteries running, yep, enough of that fun.
Okay, all right, so we can, we can refer.
Okay. Yep.
Um, okay, so, uh, let's see, housing. I'll share that. Okay, so, uh, again, this is, um, the. Uh, a vision statement that we envision an Andover that strives to create a more, more affordable housing. To welcome a wider variety of residents and households and ensures opportunity for residents to thrive throughout their life stages. Um, we go through a lot of the background and the data that was available, uh, as part of the Affordable Housing Plan. Um, that talks about the, the age of our units, the, you know, the distribution. Um, the relative drop off of new construction over the last really fifteen years or so. Um, and then places Andover, you know, in its context in terms of median household price, household sizes and, and, um. Uh, and that sort of thing. So we go through the, the demographics and, and what's that affordability. Um, we talk a bit about, um, Alice and the, the need for affordable housing for not only our current population. But also populations of Connecticut and, and projected, uh, population relative to housing, housing costs. Um, and the need for, uh, increased opportunities for empty nesters and, and young families and, and first time home buyers. And those sorts of things. So it, it's a, it's a lot of sort of going through a lot of that data. Um, and then we focus on the aims and objectives, the strategy items, um. And I'll just, I'll read briefly the, the, the four big core, uh, goals, which are to ensure adequate housing. For individuals of all ages and incomes is available within Andover, with a focus on allowing for, allowing residents to age in town. And young adults to remain in town and grow their families. Second, to allow for a variety of types of affordable housing. Third is increase the number of affordable housing units through incentives and dens- density bonuses where appropriate. And fourth is to encourage additional housing in locations near existing services and transportation options. Um, and then we go through a variety, I think there's about, there's thirteen specific recommendations, um, looking at. Different sections of the regulations to tweak for additional density or, um. You know, restriction, um, requiring restrictions on income. As well as looking at specific grant or funding opportunities that the town could pursue. To create either carrots or sticks to, to incorp- encourage more, um, affordable housing development. Um, so I, I, I won't go through all of those, I'm happy, hopefully people have gotten a chance to take a look and I'm happy to. Listen to any comments, um, and, and then, you know, we will talk about this next month as well.
I thought that the action or strategy number six was done. The, uh, ADUs as a right.
I. I thought it was still a special permit, am I?
It's special permit unless it's as a right if you rent restricted. Eat restricted. But if you want to not have it, eat restricted.
Oh, I see, yeah. So then it's a special permit, yeah, and so this, this is, this is recommending going, going, making it. Um, either shifting it a little bit, and so making it easier for everyone, so either make it as a right across the board. Or make it, uh, an affordable restriction across the board, so it could be as a right, but you're, you're, you're restricting. So to basically encourage more of them one way or another, so, but, but, yeah. But we can, we can, we can look at that a little bit more.
Okay, and just as a reminder, yeah, just as a reminder to everybody, uh, we don't allow. ADUs in Lake District unless you've got like three acres of land. You don't allow accessory dwelling units in the Lake District. We'll poke at ourselves here a little bit, and then bring right on. One word that I got heartburn with, the very last sentence of the. These methods of achieving goals in Andover were discussed in the Andover Affordable Housing Plan. A continued commitment to achieving them will result in sustained efficiency in housing stock. If we continue to commit the way we have over the last couple of years, we will get zero. So get rid of that, continue.
Where, where, I'm sorry, where is that?
It is, uh, the second line up above these objectives.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have done, I think we've done an okay job with the, the regulations, but, you know. We have done nothing for affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, identified the last plan of conservation, the rear four areas were. I don't know if that's in this new version.
It is, yeah.
That's by all we've got, so I'm adding to what you said, you know.
Right, yeah, but, you know, how much affordable housing did we?
We have not in the last five years, right.
You're on, right, yeah, that's. So, you know, we either don't believe that we want more affordable housing. And we just be in lip service to it. We gotta start doing something, but, you know, to continue on as we have gone is not gonna get us anywhere.
So, does affordable housing falls under fifty-five a moment?
Affordable housing? We, we do have a regulation for fifty-five and over land residential development, but. You know, we can do other stuff too, uh.
Okay, maybe this is not the platform to discuss it, I'm concerned in affordable housing.
Yes, I think we all are, you just, so, and, and it takes, you know. Strategy one is the key to this whole thing. We have to create an affordable housing committee to work on. And, and that was, that was item number one in our Affordable Housing Plan. You know, and we don't have one, and so, we, we need to, if, if we fix this or start picking. Any progress at all, we gotta go out and start tackling it, and, uh.
Gonna take a much bigger effort than anybody wants to do right now.
Yep, and I think that's because we're all happy living in our little single family.
Houses, right.
Yeah, and I think affordable housing, if I may speak, comes with a lot of problems. I think that needs to be addressed and book that, everything else, so, I mean.
Well, and we're looking for, you know. Alice housing, not, you know, low income housing, you know, we're talking about policemen and teachers and, uh. Uh, you know, nurses and stuff like that, that, uh, you, we, we'd love to have, so.
I, I, I think this sound would be perfect for it, I believe.
I do too, I've looked it for a while.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's, that's an option.
Further up, after talking about the Hopper Mahomes at Riverside Drive, it's a section four point one four. Of the regulation comes plan has a. Regulation currently caps the density of six business acres. To septic systems, or is that just?
That was, I think it was due to septic systems. You used to have a requirement that you could only have a five thousand gallon. And I think it's like a hundred and fifty gallons per person per day. Goes into that.
Right, so it's, it's, go ahead.
We moved up to seventy-five hundred, so that's a fifty percent increase in septic. So we, we can make that, and there's a lot of technology going on in septic designs now. I think we can make that much better than that. Yes, it would.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a hundred and fifty gallons per bedroom. Um, and so seventy-five hundred gallons, uh, equates to basically fifty bedrooms worth on, on any given lot. So assuming your soils are decent or you have enough acreage, you could actually do a fairly substantial development.
Yes, that's, that's a big, we've changed that one thing for the new, new stuff. Any other comments?
So what we would ask is if, so everyone hopefully has the word version of this. Um, if you do have edits, and I've, I've made a couple of notes this evening, we'll plan to send out. Um, a revised version of this and, um, you know, in the next few weeks in advance of the next meeting. And then in advance of the next meeting, we will prepare the next chapter, which I believe is the quality of life, uh, chapter. Um, and, and Jed, to your initial point, yes, we will, when we have all the chapters drafted, we will also be. Producing an implementation guide that has the, the to-do list for who's, who's doing what and when.
I was a little surprised that in the background, your leading paragraph talked about, in the remaining point two percent are mobile home. To see that there was a mobile home in Andover.
Well, that's what the Census Bureau says.
Okay, there's, you know. One thing you probably gotta do is upgrade our regulations to allow mobile home. Some extent, even though everybody's excited about that year, but.
That, that's in five oh, five thousand.
Two, yeah, it is, it is, it's, um, yeah, for an individual lot, like mobile manufactured homes. Are to be treated the same as standard, single-family stick-built houses. Um, so which not to say you could put a trailer park on your residential property, but you could put. A trailer style home as your, as your residence.
Yes. Now, is there something that we should recognize in this chapter on affordable housing that? Discusses, anything coming out of what the state working on right now?
Um, I don't think, no, I, 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 I don't think so, um, what, what five thousand and two would require. Is a, a modification of how we approach our Affordable Housing Plan, principally, that's the major change that, that would address zoning. Uh, planning and zoning. And it would just. Um, establish a numerical target for housing generation. Mostly through regulations, you know, incentives, policies, requirements and that sort of thing. It doesn't require the town to build anything or to, to fundamentally do anything different with how it's. Um. Uh, building, but, but it would, it would be primarily a regulatory change and, and, you know, this chapter in specific. You know, talks up and down about the need to encourage more of these things, so I, I think any affordable housing plan. Uh, with a specific numerical target that would come out of the town would be very much in line with, uh, the, the direction and thrust of this. Chapter.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody else up here on the, on the housing thing? Okay, what else you got for us, John?
Um, well, I mean, we could, we could talk a little bit more about five thousand and two, um, which, which does have. A number of things that towns are gonna have to, to look at, um, it's, by the way, it's, it passed both houses, uh, and senate. Sitting on Lamont's desk, um, he hasn't decided whether or not he's gonna sign it yet. It seems likely he's going to allow it to pass into law over the next week, whether he signs it or just, you know. Lets it be, which would be an automatic approval, um, but he will probably bring the legislature into a special session this summer. To address some of the more problematic things a lot of towns had problems with. Uh, there is an elimination of arbitrary minimum parking standards in local zoning. Um, in, in favor, in favor of instead allowing or requiring developers. To demonstrate that they have sufficient parking for their anticipated parking demand. In other words, case by case, a developer would come in and say, hey, I've got, here's a Starbucks or here's a Chick-fil-A or here's a Dollar General. I, I'm going to need seventy-five parking spots and here they are, rather than, rather than the town saying. If you have two thousand square feet of retail, you need da, 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 parking and, and it, you know, eliminates the formulaic and, and goes to the specific. Um. There's also an as of right provision that commercially zoned property could become. Middle housing, which is to say two to nine units of housing. Um, that's a little bit of a problematic provision that may get excised if we go into special session. Um, there's another provision that would require every municipality regardless of size to have a, um, a fair rent commission. Um, but there's also a provision that would allow municipalities to regionalize their fair rent commission, so it's certainly possible that. You know, A- Andover will be, you know, asked to participate in a CROG, you know, regional fair rent commission or, you know. Bolton, Coventry, Andover, Columbia will, will go into one together, um. Anyway, there's, there's a, there's, there's a number of provisions, I, I don't think any one of them is going to dramatically change the way Andover does business or does it. Planning, um, I, I do think that if we have to write a, a fair housing plan. Planning. Um, I, I do think that if we have to write a, a fair housing plan or a, a affordable housing plan under the new provisions. It'll just require the town to be a little bit more aggressive with some of the regulatory changes that it's, it's looking at. Um, but again, I, it's, it's not, it's not a, uh, it's not a sea change.
How did the fair share conduct discussion end up?
So the, the affair share report was issued. Um, and, and this, this bill. And, and there, they, the consultant used three or four different methodologies to come up with sort of different numbers. One was sort of based on. Economic opportunity within the community, others was based on sort of proximity to transit and job centers. Um, others was dealt with. The sort of level of throughput of, of applications for development. Um, and, uh, they, they settled on this bill, five thousand two, um, settled on. Methodology A of the study, which, you know, sets up a, a, a number, and I, I regret, I don't have Andover's number offhand. But it, it sets a big number, which in Andover is, is not that big. It's, it may be two hundred units or something like that, which, you know, relatively speaking is a lot, but. Um, this bill would then. This bill would then take a quarter of that. And that would be the town's target for the first ten year period. So again, let's, I, I'm, let's assume the number is two hundred, I think it's probably lower than that, but then we take a quarter of that, so fifty units. And that's what the town's target would be over the next ten years, is how can we? Improve the regulations, improve the regulatory environment, you know, through a system of incentives and, and requirements. You know, make it possible for that number of units to be built. And so it's just, it just places a number on the town's. Trajectory.
Okay. We're not building a lot of housing.
Have we, have we contacted the governor's office, pushback, someone?
They know where he is.
Good.
The governor was here.
Pushback for what reason?
Reason, it's, that's a, that's a high number for a small town like that.
It's, um. Yeah.
Mandating the towns on, on what we need to target as far as affordable house.
Okay, well, so there's, there's been a federal law called the Fair Housing Act that's been in place for fifty-five years. And towns like Andover have basically ignored it for five decades. So at some point, you gotta follow the law.
Well, I disagree with the state strengthening and regulating.
Okay. But this, the state controls zoning, any, any authority that towns have is granted to it by the state. So it's, it's, it's not as if the town is an independent entity with, with, uh, uh, sovereignty of its own.
Listen, my, my, my wife is a real estate lawyer and she can probably get into it with you more, so I'll be more than happy to.
Send her my number.
Absolutely. I disagree with this, so.
Okay, yep, a lot of people do, that's why.
It's why there's such a problem in the town, in this town, and every other rural town.
That's why we're here, because it's rural. Want to keep it out.
Okay, I think, uh, so. That's old business, new business, uh, we're not doing anything on. Michael Heckler, he'll start next time, uh, we deferred that at his request. And we'll continue the zoning regulation text amendment application. And, uh, we voted last time that we would have the special permit for. Pitch is the next one too. I don't know if he can do that based on where we are now, because he doesn't know, but we put in it. But that's, that's his choice. We have no, we have to, uh, act on it and, uh. Let, let me ask you this, uh. Uh, do you want me to, uh, talk to Ryan Fitch and perhaps, um, ask him to withdraw that application? I think it would be in his best interest. It would, it would make this whole process go a little slower.
Yep. Okay, I'm sorry, you withdraw his activity application versus the, uh, regulation application?
Oh, the special permit application he has.
Right, okay, yeah.
Wow, it's just that time.
All right, he, and he has a lot of work to do also, Jed, he has to have a. I mean, some sort of diagram. I know he doesn't have a lot of money, but he has to have.
No, I, uh, that's true, the, uh. Yes, yeah.
I'm not saying he needs an engineer, but something, something has to be drawn up that he has to show us.
Well, he has to be able to come to us with something that meets all our requirements, so. I focus right on the B O C D and trying to get through the regulations that go through us there, um. And see how cooperative he can run. And when he ends it, that sort of thing. We'll run next month.
One thing I realized during the talking is that everything was a little silent. I don't know what, where that was coming from, that makes sense that I answered that. But the music was.
Yeah, well, we can't, yeah, we can't, uh. You know, we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be talking about that, that at this point.
I just, I just made a.
Like Saturday night? I don't hear that.
So next up is correspondence. Anything on that? I don't know, in my notes. Um, no, 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 no correspondence, so.
Okay.
Well, the only correspondence was, uh.
Yep.
We, we, we discussed this. Under five, the pre-application conference. Okay, moving on to administrative reports, uh. You're up again, Wayne.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to say, uh, that I, that did pass the Casio level one exam. Which I was. Really worried that I didn't pass it. But I, I got notified that I did. Okay, so having said that, um. Something came to mind.
Congratulations.
Can you hear me? So, something was brought to my attention involving a, uh, real estate offering. On Wales Road, uh, that I did my research on. Learned that that property, wow, is not a lot of record. It's not, it's not a lot that's been recorded. And for the research, uh. I listed these. And they confirm my opinion that a lot of record cannot be offered for sale. A lot is, a lot that is not on the record, not be offered for sale. So. I am working with a landlord and a real estate, and there's been a lot of back and forth between them. A resistance, I'll be honest. Okay, notice a violation is pending and issue. Uh, voluntary compliance is not forthcoming. I, uh. Play complaint that I investigated the Hutchinson Road. Um, after my investigation, but I determined. Mostly unsubstantiated. However, there are some cars on the property that are not registered or being found. They are in good shape, not junk or anything like that. Uh, so, I'm monitoring that again for.
Wayne, where is that last one?
Hutchinson Road.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Specifics, I don't want to discuss in a public forum, forum, individual, things like that.
Right.
Well, um. I, I've also brought what information I gleaned from my investigation to the town assessor. There was a complaint, uh. Johnny Millroad. Clearing a lot, uh. And. Not against any of our rules to cut your trees down, trees. Um. But, uh. Appears as though the complainant is, is working with the landlord. Purchase the property behind them. Hopefully, that goes away because of that. I investigated a light, a whole violation on Oak Hill Road. Zoning violation would have been in a camp trailer. Taking up residence in a camp trailer. I'm unable to substantiate that portion of the complaint. However, a potential blind issue does remain. Again, I am. Hoping for voluntary compliance before, um. Don't go down the road of, of writing down for a blind. On, uh, on Andover Lake, remember the name of the road, but it, it's, it's, it's actual. I, I did deny an application for a deck. Because it was proposed to the Iowa Mark, because it gets our rule. That's the end of my report, okay?
Over for Wayne.
I, I didn't think that, Grant, I saw the camp trailer. That's an angle. I noticed that for the kids.
Well, no.
Wait a few, fuck that. So. Next to Yeland Wetland Water Force. There, anything else, John?
Uh, nothing else from me, Jed.
Okay. We've already approved the minutes. Previously scheduled. With a, uh. Public hearing prior to. Seven o'clock on July fifteenth. We'll try and find the real owl.
I, I apologize, I thought of coming out here this morning, doing everything was okay and set up, but then I said, yeah. What could go wrong?
Oh, those were the magic words. Okay, um, anybody else have anything? Looking for tonight, John, John, what was your number?
I'm sorry?
Phone number?
My phone number, eight six zero. Four, five, five. Eight, two, five, one.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, if nothing else, it's nine, ten, make a motion to adjourn, second. All the favors. Any abstaining, motion five zero zero, thank you, uh, everybody for.